...language and call the meeting to order. Please all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Normally we start off with public comment, but everybody else is on the agenda, so I'm gonna try to rearrange things, but so that I don't goof up and forget things tonight, I'm gonna go right to the minutes. And I'd ask for a motion on the Virgin City Council meeting, May 28th, 2009. Chris?
Second.
And Randy seconded it. Any omissions, errors, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried?
I'll make a motion if you agree June 2nd.
June 16th.
Thank you for doing that.
I'll have a problem with the 16th.
Okay, well, we gotta have a second. Lowell seconded it, and so again, corrections, errors, omission, the 16th, Randy, go ahead and speak up.
Under the Public Works Department, my name is spelled wrong.
I'll let me fix that.
I have a hard time keeping my name spelled right.
Under the Virgin's partnership.
Same one, same one, the 16th. On the back page, it reads Alderman Austin, Austin pointed out that it is inevitable that the Special Assessment District cover improvements, et cetera, et cetera. I'd also like the minutes to reflect that I stated that I am opposed to the implementation of the Special Assessment District.
We'll give Joanie a few seconds to find all that stuff.
There's two, John. There's that one that was the budget, is that what he's talking about?
The 16th.
There's two on the 16th. You can have them. And then, where's that other one, David?
Second page.
On this page, okay.
The Virgin's partnership.
He's at the top.
Back page.
Right here somewhere.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
These are opposed.
Let me know when you're ready, Joan. No rush.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor of those corrections and other items that were adjusted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, that addresses the minutes, and thank you for indulging me there. We're going to go to Michelle first because the food is getting cold when he's up here. We don't want that to happen. So, we have a request for a liquor license and a tobacco application for the Stevens House on the green. Stipulations are that we don't see anything about live music. Do see the operations hours are from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM. So, could I have?
That would move outside consumption on the patio.
Thank you for bringing that out, for missing that. I'd ask for a motion.
Make said motion.
Randy, Lowell seconded, open for discussion. Come on, give him a hard time.
I like my food.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Me too.
Good night.
They're good, they are. Okay, we're gonna do the next one Joan just handed us, and I didn't read it. License name is Running Takeoff. The Bar Anado. What are they looking for, Joan?
They're looking for a recommendation for their caterer's permit. Those are two different applications, one on the front, one on the back. They're both will be held up here in the Opera House, and we've never had any problems with his catering, and we do have certificate of insurance on file in my office.
Important things, both of them.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by David, and I think Chris got it out, and so, open for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Boy, we're going too fast, I'm getting dizzy.
No, that's okay, just keep going.
It's too warm.
Yeah, what'd you do, turn up the heat?
I jeez 'em, I know 'em, really.
Okay, now we're going to public comment. We don't have any public, Neil's not here today, I thought, I expected him. I had a little joke planned for Neil, I was gonna bring it, I have a rooster, a stuffed rooster, I was gonna hook it up across the stage with a string for those that attended the meeting about the chickens. So those that weren't there, private little joke. Thought I would've got a laugh out of that one. Okay, the warrants are going around.
They're all the way over there.
I haven't signed them, but I will. So, old business, update.
Mike, can I just ask?
Yep, you may.
H.J. LeBeff, the streetscape sign.
What we've hired H.J. LeBeff and son to do, and they haven't finished their work, but there's a line I have in our budget for grant funding, and what I hired H.J. LeBeff and sons to do is to do a streetscape design that runs from Shear Cuts in front of Linda's, in front of Addison Outfitters, and around the corner, in anticipation of making an application for a downtown grant. They don't fund design, the way that that program is set up, Christine, they don't fund design, right? So, and of course, in this instance, you know, not only do I need to have a design to be able to apply for the funds, but I need to have a cost estimate of the project as well, because typically, we look to property owners to fund 25 percent of the project, and 50 percent would be paid from the transportation, from the downtown fund, and then the other 25 percent would come from presumably the water tower fund. Obviously, you know, when you're in front of that, handicap accessibility in that area is actually pretty tricky, when you think about Linda's ramp, and then there isn't a stairway that leads up to apartments upstairs, and then Addison Outfitters, and then also, it's gonna be a little tricky around Shear Cuts because of what was constructed in front of the Commodore Grill. So, obviously, I need to have somebody that can, that knows the ADA standards and can design that and give us a cost estimate.
Thank you for bringing my attention to that. Any other questions on budget items? Any numbers there?
Committee reports.
Hmm? Okay, committee report, fishing derby.
Two hundred and ninety-six kids from New York, Vermont, Vermont as far away as Bennington. Their family comes up every year from Bennington. Lots of prizes given out, door prizes, boats for the two big winners. Lot of participants, couple bad showers, but we fed them barbecue on Saturday and pizza at the presenting ceremony afterwards, so.
Had a bonfire Friday night?
Bonfire Friday night, and Josh Brooks played another night.
Yeah, he played Friday night, so. Yeah, so I went down several times, some large fish caught. So, everybody seemed to be having a real good time, and kudos to the committee members. They did an excellent job, I think we oughta keep them in mind for another year. Rumor is, they raised somewhere around, and I don't wanna misquote, somewhere around $7,000.
That's right.
Holy smokes.
And they were hoping to give a prize to every child that entered, so they had that much. And I'd actually, yeah, and I'd like to invite them up to say a thanks, so we, see if we can schedule them in, okay? The money rolls raised was to go towards prizes to be handed out at the fishing derby? No, for this year's.
If they're...
They just had it this last week.
The money raised gets rolled back into the derby?
No, actually. All money is converted into prizes and cost of running the, and cost of running the derby.
Every kid was given a T-shirt. And there was grab bags at the end, so, I mean, yeah, everybody got something.
Yeah, be barbecue, all sorts of fun. It was a grand turnout. There was a couple that came in on a boat that, the boat was over a million dollars, worth over a million dollars, and the kids, they allowed the kids to climb all over the boat and fish off the boat, and they were friendly. I had a nice, very, very nice conversation with them and talked to them, the people on the boat, and there was really a good group. The voters, voters worked well with them this year, and I think that was a big plus, so. Yep, great, excellent, thank you. Would you just kinda give a brief report on where we just came from?
Sure. Mike, sure, Mike and I met with Virgin's school board, I guess, the graded school district board, regarding the potential, or at least some ideas about how to deal with the swimming pool property. And the school board had basically two options that they were discussing, one was to create a 501(c) or a nonprofit, the second was to have the city take over operation of the pool. Majority of our time, I think we kinda tossed ideas back and forth about kinda what it would cost the city in terms of management, money, insurance, those kinds of issues. And just a lot of conversations surrounding that type of thing. We had a little bit, towards the end, we talked a bit about whether or not there was any momentum or any interest in forming a nonprofit and what that might mean. That's, anything else you guys, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that was pretty much the gist of the conversation.
Yes, things are gonna go forward and some investigation is gonna be done as far as cost goes, like Joe was saying, and so, we're nowhere yet, but we're in discussion as to the potential and the possibilities as to where this may land in the end, so we don't have a definite path yet.
There's gonna be some numbers presented to Mel in terms of the last couple years budget, their, this year's budget, that type of thing. So he gets some ideas, how much more work it's gonna cost.
Question?
Is that, it's not just the pool property, it's all that property.
Yes, yes.
That's correct, that's what, because right now, the, you know, when the Virgin's Union Elementary School was formed, you know, there was fourteen acres of land that went to the Virgin's Union Elementary School. The Virgin's graded school district still owns the land underlying the swimming pool, the tennis courts, the skate park, and the skating rink, and the Little League field, part of the nature trail, and an additional eight acres over off from New Haven Road. So, also, the graded school district owns land that represents, you know, I'll say about a third, maybe a half of the Union High School's athletic fields. It's just, you know, a lot of people think that all of the athletic fields that the high school uses is a part of their property, that's really not the case, you know, some of their athletic fields are over on the graded school district property. So what the school board is contemplating was that parcels, if you will, that is, that are adjacent to the Union Elementary School that encompass the nature trail would go to the Union Elementary School. Property that underlies the athletic fields would go to the high school, and so what remains is a strip of land, you know, off from East Street that includes the swimming pool, tennis court, skating rinks, and skate park. And what they, what they're contemplating is either forming a 501(c)(3) to convey that land to and operate those facilities, which also might encompass continuing to lease the tennis court and skating rink to the city, you know, or conveying that whole strip with all of those facilities, as opposed to the city leasing right now, because we lease everything there except for the pool. So that's what they're, that's what they're contemplating.
Okay. Any other questions about that? If not, Ziggy, anything to report?
I know everybody, all the towns are struggling right now to get their budget in place, so there wasn't much to, you know, to...
Fersburg's having a meeting next Tuesday night? I penciled it in as a, I'd like to attend, so if somebody can, if you can just, somebody can confirm that that's still happening, and I can call Loretta and just, I'll call Loretta. I'll take you out of the loop, you guys got enough to do.
I know, yeah, 'cause I know I sent you an email on it, but I don't remember.
Nope, it's next, next Tuesday. So I'll call Loretta and just tell her I just wanna come visit and say hi, and if you'd like to go, Ziggy, just let me know, and we can either carpool or, I can go my, you know, if you'd like to come, fine. Have one of these, oh, tomorrow night, there's a hearing about the, from S.B. Collins, on the new property that wants to occupy, or the new building they wanna occupy where the roadhouse or country kitchen used to be. And it's at 7:00 PM, and I'm gonna try to be...
Fersburg?
In Fersburg, yeah, at the town hall. So, anybody that has interest and would like to attend that, feel free, I plan on going, if you need a ride, just let me know. It's happening at 7:00 PM. Yep, so that's, that's a little move. Randy, anything in your world?
One of my four walls of my shop, it's been pretty bland out there.
That's a good thing, you've got lots of work, that's very positive. Keep the money coming into Virgin's. Spend locally, though.
I do.
David?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Chris?
Nothing to report.
Noticing the farmer's market is looking attractive, we need to get more people in it.
Rhonda is out of town, and she's coming back after July 8th, so I think, once she gets home, I think you'll...
You got my email?
Yes.
About our next city voice that comes out in August is, my wife's got all the editors lined up, or the writers, and so, anybody that wants anything done, if you have something, we're actually starting to throw some of these articles that are above and beyond onto our website, so.
So in regards to the farmer's market, would it be possible to maybe get a sandwich board or something to put on Route 7, or, I don't know if we can put it out there, 'cause it's not, some way to, some way to maybe...
Like the state is doing for the Mount Philo one, you mean? I didn't say that.
Well, I just, you know, think it'd get some people off of Route 7 and away from Burlington to Middlebury on a Monday night or something.
The sandwich board that we already bought was for tax, dog licenses, tractor barrels, anything that he...
But the farmer's market has their own sandwich board.
Yes, they did, I don't know if they...
But can you put a sign up on someone else's property?
I thought that was against the zoning.
Tell them to look it out and try it.
Yeah, I don't know who's, I mean, I don't have anything to do with the farmer's market, I would just like to see better, maybe better publicity for it.
Yeah.
You know, and if people, you know, if you get a sign out on Route 7, like the one in, you know, up by Mount Philo or something.
Well, Bill Cassidy has an old hay wagon that he loans to us, that Marguerite puts her big signs on. If we can get somebody to paint something up halfway decent on a piece of plywood or so, maybe we could throw something out on, at Arbushon's and do that, I don't know if...
I'll email her.
Good idea, thanks, excellent, Joe. Let's get the word out there. That's what we need, the word. Anything else, Ms. Chris? Joanie? We'll make this go by fast, I know you're tired.
Oh, I just saw.
Okay, so that concludes the committee. Update on appeal of item number 5A.
I don't have anything new there, Mike. One of the things, this thing is dragging on, so one of the things I wanna do is, is, you know, try to, try to get this thing moving, and, you know, they obviously have filed an appeal on the second one, but I wish that we would get an answer on that first appeal, find out where we stand.
Yeah.
You know, it was on the record, they, the court system has the tape, they have the evidence, they have the decision, I, you know, to me, I think they should just make a determination whether or not the Development Review Board, you know, took appropriate action. You know, this thing hangs and ends up costing us, you know, legal fees, you know, on our side, costs legal fees on Shlansky's side. I mean, to me, you know, let's get it in front of, typically, the Judge Tom Durkin is the guy that is the head of the Environmental Court, typically, they have a site visit, come down, take a look at the situation, make a decision. I don't, you know, I don't see why this thing has to drag on and on with a lot of legal fees and briefs and all that type of thing, you know. You know, we had our hearing, the board made a decision, so I'm gonna try to impress upon, you know, our legal team to basically force the issue, let's, let's get going and stop, you know, stop all of the out-of-court discussion.
I've had conversations a couple times, most recent with David, and every time he manages to bring up that part of the conversation of his side of the story, and so, I wish there was a way that service could be provided, I'm not sure that we can come to an agreement on how that, how that happens, so, yeah, and it's mainly all about money in the end, We can only pray for a windfall. Okay?
B we've covered.
B we've covered, thank you. Item number six, city manager's report.
Yeah, I'm just gonna defer till you get to the, to the other items that I have under new business, Mike.
No problem. Numbers seven, A, under new business. In your packet, you have a letter from Terry. I don't know if this requires any, what I would actually like to do is ask for a motion in support of Terry's request for endorsement. Can I have a motion? David? And Joe seconded it? Now we'll open up the discussion. I think the letter is really self-explanatory, I mean, he's very clear, and I believe that's our direction that we were heading, it's just, this is more, I believe, of a formality so that he can move forward.
But what this, I'm not sure if Terry's letter, I thought I read it, but maybe I didn't, but anyway, one of the things, anytime that there's a community development, it does make reference to the public hearing, they are on a tight schedule to get this application in under this round, I think their filing deadline is July 23rd, all right, so, oh, July 28? So, in essence, what I've suggested is you have a public hearing on the municipal development plan already scheduled for July 21st. What, what we would also seek the authorization from the board would be to warn a public hearing immediately following that public hearing for this, for this purpose as well. It's just a part of their, it's part of their requirement in their, in their application.
And then we would provide Mel and the clerk's office with a folder with all the information about the project, so if a member of the public wants to come before the hearing and see what's going on, that will all be in there.
Okay, then, can I kinda amend that motion to read that we go ahead with the public hearing and warrant it?
Certainly.
You agree with that?
Friendly.
You agree with that?
Okay.
Any other discussion?
This has to be done by the 28th?
Of July.
File the application. With the Vermont Community Development Program.
All right, now...
By the 28th.
Okay, and we're now, and we're meeting July 21st?
We're having a hearing scheduled on the municipal development plan for July 21st anyway. What I'm suggesting is that once that public hearing is closed on the municipal development plan, that you reopen another public hearing dealing with this application.
I didn't catch that part.
And have them both, have them both the same night.
Both the same night, okay.
Right, correct.
All right.
Any other clarification needed there? If not, we have, any other discussion?
Just one quick question.
Go for it.
This is all strictly elderly housing.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes, it is. Okay. Joan, can you read back the motion so I don't get it messed up? Or you wanna get...
They have a request for a city endorsement of the Community Development Block Grant, which requires the city holding a public hearing scheduled for July 21st immediately following the other public hearing. Is that city plan public hearing?
Yes, yep.
Which is beginning at 7:00 PM.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried, done. Thank you.
I've talked to parents and people who participated in that fishing derby, and I, you guys did a bang-up, John. I just heard nothing but great things about it.
Great, thank you for your comment. Nope, no problem.
Well, we had originally, on our, on our calendar, we had thought about having the public hearing on the 14th, and just because of the scheduling of the planning commission's public hearing, and your, because you couldn't have, you couldn't have a public hearing, there had to be at least thirty days passed, so there is no meeting on the 14th of July.
Okay.
On the 21st, this might be a little ambitious, but the 21st is to be a public hearing on the municipal development plan, a public hearing on the CDBG application, and regular business. Now, if, if, Mike and I've talked about, talked about this, that if those hearings get to, you know, quarter to nine or nine o'clock, then obviously, we would need to have a subsequent meeting on, on July 28th to, to finish regular business. So, the goal is for you to, to have just one meeting in July, but it's, it's really all about how that 21st goes.
No. It's, it's an aggressive one. If, if it looks like we have a lot of regular agenda item types thing, we could possibly come in, like we have been these last few weeks, maybe at 6:30, and try to get some of the items out of the way, and then open the public hearing right on time. And a lot has to do, I mean, we've heard, some of the people that attended the other public hearing kinda know who to expect to see and what the issues are, so. I don't think there's gonna be any other real, I don't think there'll be any surprises at that meeting. We're in hopes, we'll, we'll keep it moving. Okay, item number seven B, we did that, number seven C. Mel, you wanna?
Sure.
Take that?
Basically, I think it was at the last meeting when I put together some correspondence of, from the owner of the Emerson Guest House, basically, just, it was about whether or not we were billing bed and breakfasts fairly, and so what I did is I did a little bit of research into how we have been billing for these units, and there's a separate sheet on here that looks like this, that has accessory dwellings on the top, and it's, it is a little bit easier for us, I feel, that our sewer rate structure parallel our zoning uses, and one of the things where we have seen some inconsistency is that, in the case of an accessory dwelling unit, which is a small apartment, and under the law and our zoning regulation, when somebody has like a one-room accessory apartment, it's really a part of a single-family dwelling, it's not a duplex. An accessory dwelling unit is a part of a single-family dwelling, and we bill for one unit. Relative to a bed and breakfast, we define a bed and breakfast as a dwelling unit whereby the owner or occupants rent out up, up to six rooms, but a bed and breakfast is a part of a bed and breakfast, and historically, what, the way that we've been billing bed and breakfast is that, the bed and breakfast operation is considered a separate unit from the dwelling, and so therefore, they've been billed for two units. It may very well be a no harm, no foul, because the way that we bill sewer, if you are a, if, let's say you were a restaurant, we send you a bill for $29.16, which buys you 6,000 gallons of water, and then the water district reads the meter, and if you use more than 6,000 gallons, that's reported to Joan, and the next time Joan sends a bill, she bills for so-called overage, so like if they use 11,000 gallons, then they would get another bill for another month at six, and then they would pay 5,000... at six, and then they would pay 5,000 more. So relative to a bed and breakfast, the way that we have historically been doing it, we've been treating those as two units, and when they pay their bill, they actually are buying 12,000 gallons, and if they use 13, then they get billed the additional thousand. You know, to me, a bed and breakfast, like an accessory dwelling unit, or like a home occupation, it's contained within, it's contained within a, a single-family dwelling, and therefore shouldn't be regarded as a, as a double unit. So, the bed and breakfast, boarding and rooming house and inns, you know, I feel should not be charged so-called double units, or triple units, or anything like that. It's charged one unit, but subject to the overages, just like other commercial uses. So, it would be treated, uh, like a residential property, however, subject to the overage like non-residential properties are used. Another inconsistent we have, inconsistency, inconsistency that we've uncovered, uh, is whereby, in one instance, a community care facility, uh, you know, has a, a dwelling unit kind of contained, but the master kitchen is downstairs, and in that instance, uh, it's been historically charged as one unit, whereas another nursing home in, in town has a, uh, a, an apartment for the manager to reside there, and we, we've charged them, uh, as two units. And then we have another nursing home that has neither of those situations, and so they just get charged with one unit. So, there's been some inconsistency, in my opinion, and again, it, it really, it still comes down to no harm, no foul, because, you know, if, you know, the bottom line is as long as they're treated with a potential for overage, overage, you know, it, it's, it would, it results in the same, you know, if it's a, if, if the occupancy is, is high and active at that, at that facility. So what I'm, what I'm looking for is effective our next billing, I don't know, would these, Joan, are these monthly people right now, anyway?
Yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't have, this wouldn't necessarily have to wait until October, like the, it comes out of that other, they would be, they're in, they're in part of that other book, if you will?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so what I'm, what I'm proposing to you is that, is that, like with accessory dwellings, home occupations, that these other uses, bed and breakfast, boarding and rooming house, inns, nursing or community care home, and professional residence office, be considered a single unit as part of the, the, the single-family dwelling, if, if, if there is a single-family dwelling there.
Does this require a motion and a?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, they, you guys, I don't set rates, they set rates, so yes.
And then is it gonna be sent with the Nashville?
Slow me the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Randy second it? Open it up for discussion?
Sorry. So that is if there is a single unit, it has to be a single-unit dwelling there.
They would all be, they would, regardless of whether or not, regardless of whether or not there's overnight ma, overnight quarters for people associated or not, all right, uh, they become, they really are considered one unit. So, in essence, you know, to, to, to name the properties, it would clarify that Emerson's Bed and Breakfast, Strong House Inn, Briar, uh, I call it Briwood Manor, it's, can't think of the name of the name, I'm sorry?
Alden Place.
The place on, Alden Place. Uh, Ringer Care Home, and what used to be Clark's Care, Care Home. All of those facilities, uh, also, we just recently approved a permit for Fred Lowen to operate a boarding and rooming house in the, in the Esti, in the Esti property. All of those properties would be considered a single unit under that, but of course, billed for any overage, just as they are today. They're still, they're billed for overages now.
I'm sorry, you probably said?
But I, could you explain how that's different from the way it's done now? Uh, like, uh, currently, uh, two, two examples. Ringers, all right, they have historically been charged as one unit, all right? The, the Ringers live upstairs, operate their, operate their nursing home, they've been charged one unit. If they use more than 6,000 gallons per month, they're billed for overage. Spruce Gardens, I think is, is the name of the Briarwood, that's a 19-bed facility, but it also has an apartment that was, in essence, originally designed for the overnight management to live in. We have historically charged them for two units, okay?
Apartment, fully independent.
Apartment.
Right.
From the nursing home.
Well, it, it is, it is.
They do have a kitchen, a hall.
Yes, I, I realize that, but the way that that was, that, the way that that apartment was approved, it really was approved as managed, as, as dwelling quarters associated with the nursing home, and I think that's the difference. If they use it, if they use it as managed, as apartment associated with oversight of the quarters, it's a part of the operation, no different than Ringers. If it's used as an absolute, separate, standalone apartment, that, that would be two units.
Okay, so we've been charging them two.
Because it's been.
And we've only been charging Ringers.
I, I don't remember the specifics about.
The complaint from, uh, Emerson's Guest House?
Well, it's, when I say complaint, it's really, uh, fairness, whether or not, you know, uh, you know, the, the Walshes operate, they are a single-family dwelling, they, uh, they rent out lodging to paying, paying guests. Basically, if somebody has, if you, if you rent out more than, more than, uh...
I mean, how are they billed now?
She bills at two units.
Okay, okay, okay.
But they would be billed as, they would, she billed, they're billed at two units.
Right.
Plus overages, if applicable.
Okay.
All right, so I mean, like, in the case of the Walshes, if they always use more than 12,000 gallons per month, their bill will be no different.
Right.
Right.
However, anytime, under this scenario, if, if, if they, uh, if they use less than 12,000, their base, instead of being a 6,000-gallon base, it, it changes from a 12,000-a-month base to a 6,000-gallon month. So they could, uh, see some, some benefit, if you will, by being considered one unit.
All right, thanks. Okay. Any other questions?
So basically, over to this motion, that's what it would put in place, is that there is consistency among all these uses that he has pointed out here, and they'll all be subject to overage charges if they exceed 6,000 gallons.
Right, because our, the way that our ordinance is set up, the overage charges are only for non-residential uses, that's how it is currently stated there. And what I want to make it clear is that these uses, which are certainly residential-like, are treated like non-residential u, units for overage purposes. Because people, because right now, people who are solely residential, I mean, at your home, Joe, if you use more than 18,000 gallons in a quarter, you, we, you don't get an extra sewer bill, all right? These, uh, these units, because they have a, a non-typical resident, a non-residential activity, or non-primary residence activity going on, I feel that that activity is commercial-like, and therefore should be subject to the overage.
Good discussion. Any other questions or clarifications? If not, we have a motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Item seven, D.
You know, we had those in a folder once, Joan, I don't, the, uh, social service agreements?
She didn't put them out for me.
Yeah, I had them, we had them out.
Those gonna be signed?
Yeah.
Do you want me to run down and get them? They're probably on the corner of her desk.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we, uh, we have prepared all of those, we, we included one sample in your, in your packet.
Yep.
They're all written, based on that, uh, sample, if you will.
We're doing good.
And, um, you know, obviously, these are the appropriations that the voters approved this past March, and the way that our process works, anything that gets approved in March, we prepare a contract for the ensuing fiscal year, uh, which requires them to, in essence, provide the service that they, that the voters approved, and then within 11 months after the end of next fiscal year, they have to provide us with a report of services that they provided, which acts as a bill, and they release the money. One of the things is, uh, that's very specific in the agreement, let's say that there was a, a voted appropriation for a particular entity, and they sign a contract with us to provide that service. If over the course of the period from July 1 to June 30, no Virgin's resident is served, there is no compensation. So, it's, it's, that's, it's tied into, it is voter-approved, but it's not, it's not set up so that it's approved, therefore write a check to the organization, they have to provide service to at least one resident to be compensated under that contract, uh, based on that voter authorization. And, you know, some of the agencies, you know, in the past, don't provide the report, we don't, we don't pay, and, you know, we're assuming that, that organization didn't provide service to any resident in the, in the city of Virgin.
And all we need is signatures to those, we don't, that's it. We just gotta sign them.
Right.
So, we'll keep that stuff moving around.
There's two, there should be two of each, there should be, uh, two, two originals, if you will, for each agency.
Yep, keep that going, and we'll move on to, um, seven, E. Report on the projected earnings, watershed reserve funds.
Yeah, you know, uh, I, I gave this to the, to the board last time, and I think that they're, based on the policy, which I copied, the new policy, it says, "The city council shall review a report of projected earnings of the watershed recreation reserve fund in June of each year." Uh, and then it says, "The city council shall adopt an expenditure budget for the recreation facilities maintenance fund for the ensuing year." I have not drafted such a proposal yet, uh, so that will need to remain an open issue.
No problem.
But I, I did want to let you know, you know, show you what that recreation reserve fund has, uh, earned, or, in essence, is projected to have, to earn. Joan will get a report here in another, uh, in another 10 days, I'm gonna say, right, Joan? All right, and so we will, once we get that report, we will be able to absolutely determine how much, uh, earnings that, that occurred in that over the last fiscal year. We will, it's not over that, that 8% or 6% cap, we'll tell you what that is, and, um, you know, I'll work on a, a budget, uh, 'cause what I've got to do actually will be to take a look at our recreation facilities and find out what kind of work might be needed in the coming year. So, I don't have that ready for you for, for this evening, but I'll, I'll try to get that to you for, uh, the next meeting.
That's capped at 6%, right, Mel?
That's correct.
Keep him busy.
Yeah, basically, what you do is you take, you take, the way that it's written, uh, is you take, you take 75% of your earnings.
Yep.
Calculate what that is. Then you look at what was your beginning fund balance, and you multiply that times 6%, and find out if whether or not the 75% exceeded 6%. If it did, it's capped at 6%. And I think in this instance, Joan, the 75% fell short of 6%, correct? Ever so slightly.
How much short?
Initially, we thought it was close, but when you did it the next day, it's like, nah.
Yeah, if I find my little spreadsheet here.
So are we gonna allocate up to 6%? Or we're gonna just allocate what we need, and that's it?
Uh, what will happen is that, that, there actually is one other, and maybe we can take that up at the next meeting, 'cause typically, the board authorizes some money for the Sam Fishman pool.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that is something that the board would need to take action, uh, on, 'cause historically, 6,000 has come from that fund to help support that operation.
We, we should, uh, take action on that tonight?
If you're, if you'd like to, that'd be good.
I make a motion that we allocate $6,000 to the Sam Fishman Memorial Pool.
Out of the watershed fund?
Out of the watershed fund.
Motion and a second, open it for discussion.
Salvation request?
Yes.
That's a shame.
Won't need any more than that?
Well, they'd always like more, but they, they, they haven't requested it, right? They, they didn't mention it tonight.
Nope.
Yeah, is the money gonna come from a recreation reserve fund, or is it gonna come from the recreation facilities maintenance fund?
It actually, how that works, Joan, is the, this, once we get the right number.
Yeah.
It, it first goes into the, the recreation maintenance reserve fund, all of it.
All of it.
All of it goes in.
And then takes 6,000.
And six pops out.
Okay, so it's coming.
Because that 6,000 is intended to be used for maintenance of that swimming pool facility, which, you know, currently isn't a, a city facility, but it's intended to be used for maintenance of that operation.
Okay, I just wanted to know which fund.
Nope.
How it's working. Okay.
There's no other line item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. All right, uh, next item on here is to, item number F, seven F, request from city clerk to transfer land record fees increase to land record computerization fund. Uh, ask for motion?
Make said motion.
Okay, Mo, or Lo, Randy and Chris, and, um, open it up for discussion. Joan, uh, you wanna add anything to the memo that you submitted, or?
Well, that pretty much explains it, but that's, the rates are going up effective July 1 to $10 a page compared to $8 a page, and the city does have two accounts going. We have a, a restoration fund, which is to restore books that are in my vault, which I have had several redone totally, it's very expensive to do, but they get frail and start tearing and falling apart if you don't get them restored, and then you're gonna lose the history. And then we also have the computerization fund, which we started. When the rates went from six to seven, well, it was seven, with a dollar going in the reserve, then when it went to eight, we created the computerization fund, because, well, based on, you know, the clerks association, when we all meet and get together, that's definitely where the future's going, is putting your records online, and they're telling us to prepare for the future and, you know, not wait, because, um, most likely, the state will tell us in two years, they all need to be online, and they won't be giving us any money to do that conversion. So, that's why I'm following like what the majority of the clerks are doing and recommending to their select boards, that we set these increases aside, instead of putting that increase into the general operating fund, so that we can begin doing in-house conversion. Like myself, I want to start in with just the maps, all the MyLars on digital, so that you can just email them to anyone who needs them, or enlarge them, reduce them.
Dumb question, the money that we raise stays here in Virgin's?
Right, right, it's a city account.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Is this what we say? Are you? He's raising it up?
No, the clerks associate, the state, the legislature, um, approved this last session to increase the fees from eight to $10. And like MyLars, we used to charge $8, they're a flat 15 now, it used to go by size, and now it's a flat 15, and the legislature raised the fees. And they wanted to propose it with the increase to go to a computerization fund, but that creates so much discussion back and forth, because the local control, don't lose local control, and, but, you know, the state, when they come along and say, "Do it," we have to do it, so, that's what they're recommending we all do, and the majority of the towns, that's what they're doing.
And you're happy with that dollar figure?
It, the $2 more to go in, yeah.
How many years do you think it's gonna take to get us where we need to be to do it all?
Uh, I have no idea. What they're doing now, maybe, you know, a few of the towns, they're already electronically doing their recording on their computers, as well as on the hard copy. I don't, I have not done any of that, they're scanning them into some type of software They're scanning them into some type of software they've bought, and, well, I've, I had a quote done, just for my MyLars, which are probably seventy-five or so of them, and that was gonna be like thirty-two, thirty-four hundred dollars. And, um, they would come every year and add any new ones that got filed with you, and add it to the indexes, offer you three different indexes. So, if it's that kinda money for seventy-five MyLars, if they're talking about going back to the beginning of time and putting everything on there, it's gonna be pricey. It's nothing you're gonna accomplish unless you hire it out, where, you know, it takes someone a year, 'cause they come into your office and have to photograph everything in your office, 'cause they can't take it out.
The older ones, the ones that sell it all, eighteen hundreds.
Do they get used much at all now?
All the time. Genealogy, people are in there all the time.
What do we get paid? We get anything off in genealogy?
No, we don't charge people for genealogy. People are tracing their heritage, and, you know, they're our local people, or were our local people.
Taxpayers and stuff.
It brings them into town, they, they love that, and they say, "Well, what do we need to pay?"
Yeah, there was a group in here, came in today while this year.
Well, the other day, when I was in the office, some people came in and asked questions.
Yeah, we get a lot during the summer. People are traveling, so they're checking on the ancestors while they're out. And those are all the books I've redone, 'cause they get a lot of wear, you know?
I'd be curious if they charge in other towns for that?
Some do, some don't.
Even a, a minimum?
A lot of it depends if the clerk is on fees, or she's on salary.
Yeah. Again, it's tying your time up, tying other people's time up.
Yes, it does.
So, if, if there was a way to...
Oh, we could charge them.
Recoup a very moderate amount, just so that it kinda helps pay for this process, and offset the, uh, the time.
Well, those people sent us a big bouquet of flowers, that was nice, for all our help.
How about a donation box? I mean, people ask, maybe if they want to do...
Oh, they try to do that, and we tell them they can't, you know? They tell us, "Go get a premium," and it's like, "No, we can't do that."
So, you can't put a donation box there and let them put what they want in there?
I don't know. I'd rather just charge a fee if I'm gonna do that.
All right.
One other thing, Zig, I'm not sure where you were leading with your question. Obviously, one of the options here is that, is that the extra two dollars not go into a fund, and, in essence, it, it results in increased revenue from the clerk's office.
Right.
That's one option. I can, I can tell you that, and Joan knows, knows this, I'm the biggest complainer when it comes to the map books, all right? The old map books are all tied into these three books, and, and of course, you know, every, you know, they only open from one side, and sure enough, the real estate agent that comes in and wants a copy of a survey, or whatever, it's on page seventy-four, and you gotta pull seventy-four pages out, make a copy, and then put the book all back together. So, I can tell you, you know, yes, part of the money for getting our maps, uh, electronic is really about, in part, it's about saving the maps, because they really get beat up, all right? But, it's really more about allowing staff to be, be more efficient, uh, and, and being able to very quickly serve the public. You know, somebody comes in, and they, you know, they live in Sunset Drive, and they don't have a copy of their survey, all right? And they need a copy of their survey for whatever reason, a real estate listing, or refinancing, or they need a zone, they wanna get a zoning permit. If, at, if, at one time, we scan all of those things into a computer, in this day and age, you can have zoom-in capability, and you can grab Lot Eight, send it to the printer, they got it in their hand, they're out the door, in seconds, as opposed to ten minutes, twelve minutes, you know, that Joan, or I, or Melissa, or Michelle have to wrestle with these books. So, it really accomplishes, it's an attempt to accomplish two goals, protect the records, but also make us, uh, be more efficient in how we're, how we can much more quickly serve the public.
Does anybody have any recommendations as far as, should, should we charge it on very minimal fee, and if so, uh, what would it be? And, again, we don't wanna scare people away, but, again, we need to...
Well, we've already adopted a schedule of fees for copies out of the clerk's office, you know, so like an eight and a half by eleven is twenty-five cents. You know, it's just that people say, you know, "What do I owe you for my copies?" They might get three, and we say, "Oh, nothing, you're okay." And, don't forget, they come in and search my records, they go to our restaurants, eat lunch here while they're in town, and...
And one of the things, relative to searching records, you know, I can tell you, there aren't lots of towns that charge people. Somebody's doing genealogy, there are towns that charge two bucks an hour, three bucks an hour, whatever they charge, okay? I can tell you that I, the way that we do it here, uh, they, we very quickly train people, say, "Here's this, here's this index, here's this index, here's book A, B, C, and D. There you go. Got any questions, let us know." So, they're not really, they're not really inconvenienced. It's not like we're doing their genealogy research.
And I, I, you know, my point, I'm, I'm very comfortable. Joan's comfortable. I have no problem with her not charging. It's just that, you know, people, you know, I just thought of a donation box would be appropriate, people really will move to put a couple bucks in.
But then you have, then you have to document that, don't you?
Well, then we have to run it through, as a...
It doesn't matter. I, I'm, I'm real comfortable with the present system.
Again, just throwing out there for discussion. So...
I can keep track of it for a month, to see how much I am losing by not charging.
Just do that, give me words back to us as to...
I think if it was very clear that the money was going towards book restoration, I think that that's...
And that's what I would, I would think we'd want it to go to, is book restorations, or, or, uh, digital...
Reproductions.
Reproduction. So, that would speed up their process, too, in finding the stuff.
Yeah.
You could do a search.
Well, that's what, that's what some of the clerks' fears are. If they get all their stuff on computerization, it's gonna get out there and be online, and then they aren't gonna come to the local level, so the towns aren't gonna get the dollar a page for a copy of a deed, or...
Do we have to actually put it out there on?
No, no, not right now, we don't.
But eventually.
Yeah, and that's why the clerks are hesitant to get it on...
I guess, maybe leave that sleeping dog alive, then. But, we do have a motion and second it, uh, on adopting, uh, Joan's recommendation, uh, to increase the fee. Uh, any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Okay, let's see, um...
So I don't mix up the numbers, I'm gonna, you...
I don't wanna talk about the Actor and the...
Yep, that's, we need to talk about...
Yeah, you need to talk about, if, if it's going, obviously, if it's going...
Yep.
Excuse me. If it's going to, I back the logic.
Okay. Um, all right, let's, uh, not deciding which going first, we'll just, we'll talk about partnership. Um, how would one like to start? Chris?
I, I would, I would vote to support the partnership, just because of the grants that, um, streetscape grants that we can apply for by having the partnership in place.
I concur.
Any other comments from anyone else?
What, how much?
We have to set a dollar figure, right?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Okay.
That's what they asked for?
Is that gonna impact...
Jackson?
Well, you know, we talked earlier in our, in our work session, Randy, about, you know, the desire to hold our tax rate, and obviously, that's gonna be a formal action here. You know, if, if, uh, you know, obviously, that comes out of our, uh, year-end fund balance, you know, we can, you know, we do have some, uh, you know, some wiggle room, you know, there is, you know, it's not like that's gonna drive, uh, you know, the tax rate up. So, we can do, use that by creating a line item in the general appropriations of five thousand, the partnership, that can be absorbed, uh, and at the same time, keep the rate stable.
And that would be just for this year? It wouldn't be like every year?
Yeah, that'd be correct, yeah.
About next year.
Yes.
Well, we've been on their case, you know, we've been trying to get this back on, back up running, and they, you know, we're fortunate, we've got people that wanna get involved in it, so probably, I don't see why, in my opinion, it's, you know, if that's what they need, that's what they need.
Anybody else's comments?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we do. Yep, we kinda went backwards, discussion first on this one, but, I'd ask for motion to...
I'd make said motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have Lo making the motion, Ziggy second it. Any further discussion before we take it to a vote? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
For a five thousand dollar support to partnership, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. It goes both ways. It really does. You're gonna take care of notifying Mr. Bill?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, the other thing is, that we need to discuss is Actor. Um, I'd ask for a motion.
I would, uh, propose a motion to include the required, requested amount of three thousand seven hundred whatever, from Actor contingent upon their, um, obtaining the grant, the matching grant from the state.
Can I have a second?
I thought they wanted more than that.
They get their...
The additional, there is in the budget, the forty-five and some change. What they're asking for is an additional thirty-seven fifty for the increased, uh, program for...
That's crazy, I wanna take that.
That's correct.
You don't have to.
I'll second it.
Okay, Randy's gonna second, so we can bring him to the table for discussion. David, would you like to go first?
Um, I think that, um, you know, providing public transportation in and around Virgin's and Addison County is, is a worthwhile goal. I have two issues. One, I don't feel that it is, um, the responsibility of the individual municipalities to provide that service. Um, the other issue is, uh, and Mel might be able to help me with the numbers, um, when we had a discussion about the costs associated with this additional route, and the projected revenue, we're looking at a, a relatively high rate of subsidy for the service, and, and I think the number is somewhere around ninety percent. Um, and, and to me, that just doesn't make a lot of sense. Um, the, uh, the, the other issue is that, um, I'm, I'm not certain that, uh, that the ridership is there to justify the, the expenditure. Um, and I, uh, I, I would not be in favor of, uh, of including that additional money in the budget for those reasons.
Okay. Ziggy?
They get over ninety percent?
No, the cost, the, the projected, the projected costs associated with this additional level of service, the revenue that's going to come in is, is ninety pers, is, is, is ten percent of that, and, and you just can't, whether something's a for-profit business or a nonprofit, you, in, in my opinion, you can't operate that way. Um, you know, one of the issues is, and, and, you know, not to get too far afield on another subject, but, going forward, one of the things that I would like to request of all of these nonprofit entities, whether we include them, uh, in the budget process as per their request, um, such as Actor and some of the other organizations, or whether it's a voter appropriation, in the, in, in the, um, in, in an effort to provide transparency to the voters, um, and, in, in an effort, uh, to encourage these entities to run their business, um, in a fiscally responsible manner, I, I'd like to request of them in the future that they provide us with financial statements. Um, I'm particularly interested in salaries, um, and, and I'm not casting any aspersions on Actor or any other group at this point. I'd, I'd just like to know what it is that the, uh, the taxpayers of the city of Virgin's are paying for, um, and, and I'd hope that they would, would, uh, would see fit to provide us with that information. Um, but again, I, I, I think that the main issue is that I, I just can't rationalize that level of, of subsidy.
I guess my, my opinion is that the city provides, um, in regards to who's responsible for providing, uh, transportation of this nature, I guess I don't know that. I, I think most municipalities, large municipalities, urban areas are responsible for their own, they're not state-run. And, uh, complaint is, that is often heard in a rural state such as Vermont, is a lack of transportation, uh, and, uh, public transportation, especially in regards to the, the economic climate, um, cost of gasoline, potential cost of gasoline, et cetera. And I also feel that there are a lot of services that a municipality provides that, uh, to improve quality of life in their, in their community that aren't necessarily profit-driven, and this is, in my opinion, is one. Um, a service such as, uh, transportation between our community and other communities in the area would certainly improve quality of life, improve access for not only our community, but also others, for example, uh, for Jackson and the Opera House, uh, um, bringing people up from Middlebury potentially for events, events like Virgin's Day, et cetera. Um, I'm not sure that, that this type of service could, should, uh, in my opinion, be looked at on a, on a bottom-line basis in terms of, uh, of, uh, the, the profit, profitability or profit potential of the service in and of itself.
All set, so? Randy?
My problem with this proposal was, is that it was sprung on us two weeks before our budget was to be finalized, so we didn't have any time to digest what they were trying to accomplish. Um, I agree with David that we should not be, something that's gonna be funded by grants up to ninety percent, and their unwillingness to charge fares from to and fro.
Fares are being charged.
They're charged, they're charged.
How much? They said they were gonna get, they got twelve thousand dollars in ridership fares last year.
No, actually, it was they were projecting somewhere around twelve thousand.
Over three years.
Oh, they, they were, that, that was the projection?
I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm just not in, I'm not, they're, they're in the budget for the forty-six, whatever it may be, or forty-eight, whatever it is, and I agree, I think they waited too late to ask for the extra money. Um, so it's no, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not...
Okay, well, we'll, we'll get to the vote part, this is just for the discussion part, so we'll just... Chris, any thoughts?
No, I agree with David.
Okay. Lo, comments?
I'm, I'm torn, 'cause I can see both sides. I'd like to, to be able to offer the, uh, the transportation, but, um, the municipalities' funding so much of a portion of it just seems a little much, and after the three years of the, uh, the grant that they're asking for, what happens then? Do we, do we have to, an increase on top of that? I, I don't know. And should our, our taxpayers be picking up that? I'm not really sure.
Randy?
Another, another point I wanna make, we're only talking about the additional service they want. They're gonna continue with the regular service.
Correct.
Which is happening already.
And if I could remind everyone, like, what additional service means is hourly, uh, direct route from Virgin's to Middlebury.
So, that's every hour?
Every hour. And I'm not sure, I, it wasn't like twenty-four hours a day, I can't remember.
It's, it's a, I don't know, is it really every hour?
Twelve trips a day.
I, I thought it was, it, it's gonna take a lesser amount of time. It's gonna take you twenty minutes to get there.
I thought it was on the, I thought they said it was on the hour, or every hour.
You remember?
I think that's what it was, was, uh...
On the hour?
They were adding additional routes, and I, I really can't remember if it was, that there's currently six, and it's going to twelve, or four to eight, I'm not sure, but that's, that's what it was about, was increasing that program.
Um, the, the other point that I would make, again, we're not talking about cutting their funding totally from the budget, um, but, um, Joe is correct, in that, in that a lot of other municipalities do fund public transportation. I'm not aware of any the size of Virgin's that do. Um, you know, generally, you're talking about larger municipalities, and unfortunately, one of the realities, and one of the challenges of living in a rural state, um, is, is making difficult decisions. Um, and, you know, most of our taxpayers, um, are looking at an increase, that's money out of their pocket next year. Um, most of them, uh, have seen other costs increase in terms of fuel, food, et cetera, et cetera. Most of them have not seen an, an increase in salary, I, I would bet. Um, and so, well, the, the voters and, and private for-profit enterprises have been forced to tighten their belts, and in some instances, put off plans for expansion. I think that it's fair to expect the same from nonprofits as well.
Okay. Randy, did you have something more you wanted?
Yeah, I have, actually, it's a question. Yeah, actually, it's a question, do they operate on Saturday and Sunday, or is it just Monday through Friday?
I believe they operate on Saturday, I'm not sure about Sunday. Pretty sure. Jackson, do you know by chance?
He said Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, okay. Monday through Friday, twelve times a day, there's your answer, sir. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call it to the vote. All those in favor as to pass the motion to support the funding, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the nays have it.
So no is the only one that says yes?
Yes, correct. Anybody abstain? No abstentions? Okay. All right, now we come to the big hour.
That's it.
So I don't mess up the numbers, I'll let you...
As I mentioned earlier in the budget work session, we have, Joan and I worked today completing our year-end forecast, and obviously, the way that our accounting system works, there are bills that come in in July that are booked back into June, so those accrued expenses have to end up having to show up in our budget. Also, depending on how delinquent taxes come in, that can affect us either positive or negatively, depending on how well we do within the first sixty days. I'm confident that last year, when we, last year when you ended your fiscal year oh-eight, you had a ninety-seven thousand dollar surplus, you elected to allocate forty thousand dollars towards capital projects, of which that has been spent towards the Public Works Truck and a police cruiser. You also allocated fifty thousand five hundred dollars to offset the tax rate last year. Our forecast showed that the revenues for this current year are off about twenty thousand dollars. You know, it's a combination of items relative to our general fund expense budget, the expenses were actually about ninety thousand dollars less than budget. So therefore, we had revenue shortfall of twenty, we have expenditures of ninety thousand dollars less, and therefore, we didn't need the fifty thousand five hundred dollars, as it turned out, to get that to be a balanced budget. So in essence, twenty thousand dollar shortfall, ninety thousand dollar gain in expenses, the net is seventy thousand dollars. We also had seven thousand dollars that was not, you know, that was not anticipated being used, so that gets you to a surplus of around seventy-seven thousand dollars, and again, we're not really sure where the accruals are. So the budget that I presented to you, even with the changes, the changes relative to, we do need to make an adjustment in the public works budget relative to our debt service on the new truck. We need changes, a change in the budget based on the appropriation to the partnership. There also needs to be some changes related to what was the board's decision in the budget work session to provide for a two-percentic wage increase, in essence, across the board for city employees. All of those numbers, incorporated into the budget, we can still confidently set a tax rate at the same level of, for, same level of point six zero zero seven, which is a, which is the same tax rate, same city tax rate that you had before. The other recalculation, a minor one, is that the voter authorization for tax exemption on the Masonic Call and the voter authorization for the increased veterans exemption, those two things, the city has to collect the education taxes as a result of those modifications in the grand list. The net result of that so-called local rate, or local voter decision rate, is point zero zero two three. So when you add that point zero zero two three, plus the point six zero zero seven, that gets you a combined city and local rate of point six three zero, zero three zero. Point six zero three zero, two zero three zero.
Six zero three.
Three, right. So what we'd be, I'd be looking for, Mike, would be for the board to set, I'm always confused, Joan, whether or not this board sets the local rate, I'm assuming they obviously set the city rate.
We do. We set the city tax rate and the local tax rate.
Which authorizes me to put those numbers on the bill.
So what I would be recommending that the board...
Adopt.
Set the, adopt a city tax rate level at point six zero zero seven, and a local rate at point zero zero two three, and to adopt this budget, which will be amended based on the items that I discussed and the action taken related to the partnership.
I have a motion from Chris, I have a second from Lowell, to adopt, as Mel has given the figures. Open it for any discussion at this point.
I just would like to thank Mel for doing such a great job.
That's coming.
Yeah, and keeping it, keeping it low, or stable.
Very good. So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If you do, we'll raise your taxes. Okay, I just have a few things to announce, just try to push the ticket sales on the teddy bear. It's now, its present home is Shurkuts, it'll take another move south to Lenders Apparel on Saturday. Next meeting is July twenty-first, and we'll get that agenda out so that you know ahead of time, give you as much advance warning, depending on how busy we are. The lighting of the falls, we've made a little modification, it still is from nine o'clock at night till eleven forty-five, and it is now going seven nights a week, so.
Now, it's not getting water from the ground.
Oh, yes, this is helping, yep, that is really, I was down last night and had some discussion with the boaters, and they were questioning, how long have you been doing this? This is very beautiful. So we've had a little minor problem about one set of lights not lighting, and that's being adjusted or addressed, so that'll even improve it more than what it is, so.
Yeah, I had two other, two other things, Mike, it's up to you, Mike, whether or not you want to discuss this in detail.
We're good, we're good.
This is a printed copy of an email that I, that I wrote to the Moonlight Lady. The Moonlight Lady is a cruise boat that apparently started here last year, and when I spoke to, when Captain Walker got in touch with me, I was, I was under the assumption that this activity of reserving space for the cruise boat and making modifications to the electrical system to accommodate that was something that had, you know, been approved by Rennie, and if necessary, approved by the city council, and I'm frankly, I'm not, I really don't necessarily care to deal with the history on this thing, I just want to let you know that in reality, we have this cruise boat coming here, and, you know, historically, the way that the, the way that the, that our docks have been used, they've been used on a first-come, first-served basis, and this program that has been set up for the Moonlight Lady is whereby there's signs that are put up and the docks reserved, and I guess whether or not the city council needs to necessarily make a decision tonight, because I can tell you, the Moonlight Lady, you know, they were on the assumption, they were of the assumption that their program and the reserving dock space for them and hooking up to the electricity is something that was supported by the city, and what I would like to do is to at least bring the city council into the loop on this program, find out if, whether or not, you know, this is appropriate, it is a municipal dock, I mean, you know, many boaters come here from Canada and the like, and it's, and it has historically been on a first-come, first-served basis, and the reserving of a dock, I really feel is a policy decision of the board, and we will, you know, we will, you know, implement whatever policy you make, but I, so again, I don't need a decision tonight, I think that it's, you know, given the fact that they did communicate with Rennie in the past, you know, I don't think that it would be fair to change for this season, all right, let it, let it take its course. I can tell you, they don't use the dock every Wednesday, Thursday, and Sunday, they don't. It's about whether or not they have people on, if they have a group, it holds sixteen people, you know, obviously, if only two people show up on the boat, you know, they don't make the run. They aren't due back here until July, July twelfth. You know, obviously, if this was a waiting list operation where they had tons and tons of people, you know, signing up and riding this boat, you know, it really, it's a large boat, it takes up the entire McDonough Drive dock, and obviously, in the busy season, you know, it ends up causing a result of the docks being full, all right, so I just want you to, you know, digest this email, think about it, and then, you know, in advance of next season, I feel that Captain Walker really should be coming back talking to the city council about whether or not, you know, this program continue, or whether or not it really, you know, shouldn't necessarily take up the dock that many nights out of the year, because it, there's only X amount of feet, feet down there, so it's just for future discussion.
And the weight of the boat requires something substantial to tie to, so they had to modify the dock itself to put in special cleats, had to increase the amperage of the electricity, because they need a fifty amp, not a twenty amp, so there's been some other things that have happened, and again, it is what it is. The unfortunate thing, it's driving some of the smaller boats out, and we cannot allow that to happen. I did appoint a group of individuals to look at that, it would be really great to see what we can do, not necessarily this year, but come up with some plans on expanding that dockage down there. I don't know if that requires Army Corps of Engineer permitting and what, but it would be nice to get something going on that, because again, it helped keeps our city afloat. That was a pun.
Yeah, that's a good one, that's good.
Are they loaded when it was coming up here?
It's loaded, they tour the lake, and they go into, they go into certain dockage, certain areas, and stay overnight. Then when they're hooked up to our power, they don't have to run their generators, so that's...
Apparently, they must feed them down there, right on the boat?
On the boat.
Feed them on the boat.
So they have no, they have no desire to go?
Very, very little...
They have a liquor license?
Yeah, very little, yeah.
We'll have a meeting with that committee board next.
Yeah, please, please do, and like we said, it's coming in the twelfth, if you can go down and, anybody can go down and look at it, drive around and, yeah.
The other thing, Mike, I wanted to just hand out, this is also not for any discussion, Mike, Mike's been bugging me for this for a little while, you know, obviously, when the, I gave them all...
They do, they got them all.
Yeah, you know, one of the things that Mike wanted me to do for the benefit of the board is to put together a so-called goals, goals list, I call it a goals and special projects list. I know that this has been, it's my understanding, this has been done for previous managers, and Mike is going to try to pull some other, some former, you know, past goals and objectives. You know, obviously, I do, I do, you know, much of my work is day-to-day, the phone rings, I'm dealing with it, somebody comes in, I'm dealing with it, but I'm going to say this, you know, there is some projects that I can find time to do, and so I wanted to just share with you, you know, some of the, kind of the, kind of the special projects that are kind of on my plate, you know, I didn't write a book here, these are just some things that I, that I feel need to be addressed over the, over the next year, if possible. Obviously, this, you know, if there's grant projects that come up, you know, I haven't listed every little project or large project that's on my plate, but these are some kind of special things that I seen that I need to, you know, coordinate and take care of them. Some of these are not totally done by me, they're done, they're done by, by me and others, so it's just a little bit of a guiding document, you know. What I would say is, you know, I'll speak for Michael, you know, feel free to email Mike if you, if you see something on this list that, that you think doesn't deserve priority, or there's something that's not on that list, and you don't understand why, communicate that with Mike, Mike and I communicate all the time. So again, I'm here to serve you folks, so, you know, you're the ones that, you know, should be, you know, helping me set priority as to, you know, what projects, you know, you want to see accomplished.
Did you talk to Joanie about, they're sitting down, the three of us sitting down about...
I did not talk to her about that, but we can...
We don't want to surprise her. We have a surprise for you. Actually, we hope it'll make things. Mel and I are talking about looking at the whole operation of the front office, I mean, the whole city management up here, and see if there's a way, they're really doing a fantastic job with the way they're doing it now, we don't want to put anybody in an early coffin, we want to make sure that we structure the work in a manner, and it's well-balanced, and we have fallbacks, so that if somebody's out, goes on vacation, we have a way to cover it. I would say that I think this is the best team effort that we've seen in a long time, the people pulling together to make things happen, and so Mel and I would like to meet with Joan and just talk about the future, and see how we could possibly keep it headed in that direction, and what we could do to tweak it, modify it, make it, possibly improve it.
Does this mean that we may not be hiring anybody else?
We probably will have a part timer.
It's not really about hiring at all, Zig, it's really about structuring responsibility, clarifying, you know...
So you're saying it's possible to be just the way it is right now?
Yes, we could be doing a part timer, there's some, Mel and I haven't talked about this one thing, and I had a request from the chief in the past, and this will be part of the discussion that we have then, is where they could use some help with some data entry from the clerk, and so we didn't get into that. So there's a lot of little other things that we're going to talk about and see how we can best serve the city, and if there's a way to, you know, do it smarter and not necessarily harder, so.
Yeah, no cha, it's not about changing staff and all.
It's not by changing staff, no, no.
Oh, no.
And if Mel chooses, you know, he's held off hiring somebody because he thinks we've got something that works relatively good, and how do we just finalize some stuff here? But let's, once, we want to, once we get it where we want to, we want to finalize it on paperwork, on paper, so we know where we're headed, so. Having said that, before we adjourn, we bring closure to another year, a very busy and a hard year, where everybody has really done a fantastic job, and I would like to thank both the council and Mel, Joan, and the rest of the city employees for their efforts, and I'd like to give them a round of applause. Having said that, I'd ask for an adjournment.
Virgin's Day?
Oh.
You mentioned Virgin's Day, one time on camera, so...
No, we got Virgin's Day, we got time. Oh, excuse me, French Heritage Day.
That's what I was thinking.
French Heritage Day, that happens before we, so, meet again, so please, get out, be seen, and enjoy that day, it's, it should be a big event, so.
What day is it, Mike?
Starts, if you want to come to the supper, it's Friday night on the seventeenth, and there's, it's a VA, it's a meal, and then, I don't know what time that, get online, French Heritage Day, and Addison County Chamber, and then on the eighteenth, the big event starts off with a French toast breakfast at the fire station, on to many, many events, and then we'll be having our fun and winding up for that, and next thing you know, summer will be over with.
Ooh, I didn't see that.
Thank you.